Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. March nineteenth, twenty twenty, and it's sort of the new normal for now. We're going to be holding our meetings online like this and community members can still participate. I will still read our vision statement. The Elche School cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to the global community. And this is being reported by WACA Cable TV. Our agenda this evening, our order, this afternoon, our order of business, um, this is an emergency, um, yet together to talk about some things related to the coronavirus and all the decisions that are being made and all the hard work that's being done. Uh, we will have some time for public comments. We'll have an update on the coronavirus, approval of non salaried pay custodian ESP nutrition and secretarial staff, field trips and refunds, athletic EDP and other fees, and then we will adjourn. Everybody okay with that order of business this afternoon? Yeah, we're good. And I will, um, yeah.
One thing I would recommend, um, I don't know if I was in the select board meeting last night, and I think it's probably a really good idea, um, for these online meetings is that, uh, everything we do, we do via roll call. Um, that way we're saying what and, uh, and getting it right as opposed to, uh, just saying, I think I heard person's voice A, B, or C. Uh, that'd be my recommendation.
Yeah, and I was going to suggest the same. I saw that as well. And so, uh, if there's anything that we need to vote on, I will just go one by one and ask you all to say yes or no. Okay? That work?
Thank you.
And, um, we do, we do have, um, the ability to take public comments before we get started. So I know we have a few people watching. If there's anybody here that would like to say anything, uh, please let me know now. Everybody good? Okay, so we're just going to move right into our first topic then, which is an update on the coronavirus. Mr. Adams. I can't hear you, Jim.
You're muted.
You're muted.
But Lori, you may have.
Okay, one second.
We only had that button every other time.
Okay, yeah, I see where it was. It wasn't letting me unmute him. Are you, are you unmuted?
No, it was for a second.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
Kathy's muted as well, she said, so just so you, or she's holding.
Okay.
Right, so.
Okay, thanks Kathy.
Part of the function is that Lori mutes every, can mute everybody Kathy, so, uh, when you want to talk, sometimes what we do in our meeting is just raise our hand. So then she. So, um.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm unmuted everybody. What I will say, if there's somebody watching that wants to be muted, please just mute yourself. Okay, for now. Jim?
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to start by just saying, you know, big shout out, thanks to all of our educators, our paraprofessionals, our nutrition services, custodial staff, IT staff, um, parents. Everyone in the community has, has rallied around the decision by the Commissioner of Education and Governor on Sunday, was it Sunday?
Did we lose Jim?
Okay.
Yeah. Certainly, um, there were a lot of people for a loop, uh, to, to a certain extent. And, um, what I want to say is that I'm just proud of everybody rallying together before I get into where we are today and where we're headed with, um, our closure for the next, well, two weeks and two days right now. I mean, first week is almost over. Uh, had great conversation with our, our union on Monday where we came to some agreements about how we were going to go about, um, over a two day period, uh, on Tuesday and Wednesday, pulling materials together that we could eventually share with our community of learners. Um, and, and really what we have to focus on is it's been real clear from the Department of Education that we're providing enrichment opportunities. We're not looking to move the ball forward, if you will, uh, with our curriculum. Uh, that, that comes with some real challenges and some stipulations that we're not prepared to, to do. First and foremost, uh, having an opportunity to create online platforms, uh, while we have Google Classroom and many teachers will be using it, um, and Zoom. Uh, we don't necessarily have everybody trained in, in professional development and how to best use the, the platforms. So over a two day window, uh, they came into the buildings, some remotely, some physically, and worked on developing a lot of materials, uh, for, uh, the, the stuff that we shared. And we'll continue to share it, uh, as we go through, uh, the, you know, the process here over the next few weeks. Every Friday morning at ten o'clock, I have a Zoom session. This is probably my fiftieth, as I said, in the last, like, three days. Uh, we'll, at ten o'clock, just for superintendents, we have a, we have a, um, a Zoom session with him to figure out where the state is and what's going on there. So I have that tomorrow morning as well. And if there's something that can be shared, we will. Uh, that, that being said, I, hopefully this will work. Uh, we've done this. I want to share a couple of things with you that we've been working on, um, and, and it's still continuing to develop. Um, Paul, if I don't, Paul Viera, I'm asking you here, uh, I think I can still do it. I can share my screen. So, give me a second. Do this. You should see here. Uh, this document. Hopefully you can all see what the document looks like. Um, it's an APS Resources for Enrichment Opportunities. So what this will be is a one page document that goes on to the, each of the websites, but on the, mainly on the, the front page of the APS website. Where we're gathering and putting information here so parents have easy access. Uh, that, you know, some of our stuff is online learning, some of it is physical learning that people came in and grabbed documents today. But just to give an idea of what it might look like, uh, we're trying to unif- make our websites uniform. So here's the Mindes, um, website that this will link to, and it's also on the Mindes site. Um, with a variety of, of opportunities, student work folders with material that's in here, uh, that parents can go to. Uh, and what we have to re- remind ourselves is this is not about the, the moving of the ball forward, if you will, with curriculum. It's about providing opportunities for all of our kids. Uh, so some of this stuff that was printed out for those families that can't and don't have technology, I think we ended out, uh, well over a hundred Chromebooks today, uh, this morning. And so, so a lot of families who didn't have access do have access now. So it's, it's an exciting time. It's sort of still scary, um, because we're, we're learning on the fly. So this is the middle school page. And, you know, we'll have one for Pittaway, Warren, as well as the high school. I think what's important to understand, uh, is that every building is different, right? You build a learning environment for a kindergartner, that's going to be very different than trying to build a learning environment for an AP chemistry kid. And so we're trying to be thoughtful of that, but also being thoughtful of the governor's and the commissioner's words that this is about, uh, you know, enrichment and opportunity for all kids. Um, so that's important to know. Secondly, today, um, at eight to eleven this morning, we handed out Chromebooks, uh, to families that needed to have, you know, have some sort of electric device at home. Uh, some of it was because families are saying, hey, Jim, we've got devices, but we're working from home too, so our kids are out of luck. We need to utilize, um, the, the school's resources. So, so that went well today. Paul Carpenter and his staff did a phenomenal job of, of getting everything arranged. Paul Viera and Jen Cutler came in to assist, making sure the social distancing was appropriate as people came in. We also had all buildings, the ability to open up and so certain time periods where kids could come in, grab things out of their lockers should they need to. And then the third thing happening today was obviously, uh, our grab and go lunches and practices, um, serve well over fifty students. Um, what, I think, two days ago, we were at like five, uh, and what happened was, uh, I was very fortunate. I had my wife send a message in Spanish and, um, one of our employees at the central office sent one in Portuguese. And we saw a tremendous increase in the number of people in that two day window increase, which was great. Mark.
Jim, just a question about, um, I know you sent a lot of emails out and, you know, one of the concerns I think we always have is about, are we getting our message to those who need it? Um, I'm just curious, what are there things other than, than those emails, were we able to do to make sure people know about that opportunity?
Well, it's, it's emails, phone calls, and reaching our ELL teachers who have been really, um, tremendous in reach and identifying the families that we need to, uh, get ahold of, as well as our counselors. Um, so last night, Pete Regan called me at home and said, hey, you know, I've got my counselors are concerned about, uh, these two, you know, these kids. And they didn't, they don't have the wherewithal to even go to the school and pick up the lunches. How can we work with those, these families? So we started a Google Sheet as well and, um, got all that information from counselors and starting Monday, um, we'll be delivering meals today. So today, um, our SROs were at the school, uh, during the, the pickup. And they brought those meals to the families that we knew, uh, didn't have the opportunity to either sign up one or two, um, didn't get the messaging somehow. What we have found is that it's really the word of mouth has been really important. In all my emails, I've said, listen, if you're getting this and you know of a neighbor or know of someone that's not, um, getting the messages because they don't have the technology or whatever, please reach out to them. And reach out to us so we can take care of making sure everyone is getting their needs met. So that's really where we are, Mark. I think, um, you know, Lisa was really pleased to have closed the, I think it was sixty today.
Wow.
Meals, uh, which was a lot, and we're covering for two days. So Monday will be a pickup for Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday will be a pickup for Wednesday and Thursday, and then Friday moves in. I, I think it is critically important to understand that, um, the, the FDA or the, the waiver at the, I always get it mixed up at the federal level, but, um, who's in charge? Whether it's food and drug or health, I always forget. But reimbursement for meals for our, um, free and reduced lunch students, um, they set at fifty percent bar. If you have fifty percent of your students, you can get reimbursement for this process that we're undertaking. We're not there. We're at like, you know, nineteen, twenty percent, maybe a little bit higher. So the commissioner is working with also the governor, trying to find a waiver to allow school districts, uh, who are providing, and we know we need to be providing nutrition services to our, um, to our families, that we can potentially get reimbursement. So the, the reason why we're doing it at the high school is it allows, uh, every family to come in, whether they're free and reduced or not. We're, we're opening this up to everyone and they type in their PIN number, uh, identification number so we can track it. So if eventually we get to the point where we can look for reimbursement, we have that data. And.
And just one, one follow up to Jim. We, uh, you give the number of sixty and, and I don't know what the, she said twenty percent. Do we have like a master list of all students that are eligible for free and reduced? And are we trying to do the reach, outreach to your last contact info and that kind of thing, sort of by phone call or what have you, to try to get the message there as well?
Yeah, there are six, we have about six hundred students. So we captured about ten percent of those students.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we'll reevaluate it again. So what we tried doing was making sure, because we don't want to make two hundred meals, right? A third of a whatever, and then have them go to waste. So Lisa and I will reconnect, uh, today or tomorrow and say, okay, how can we now get, so she can compare the list of the kids who came in with the kids that we have on the list. And not all families are going to take cer- take advantage of it. We know that. And at least we'll have an opportunity to send another targeted connect. I don't think the email, I think most families are getting emails because they have phones. So I think we're reaching those, I, but I also think the connected calls, it's, it's. Have a listserv that we can just pull that information out of all students who are free and reduced lunches. If I could just pull, um, that, that out, it'd be great. But we're also trying to say, we're not, we don't want to identify kids. It's illegal first and foremost.
Yeah.
Secondly, we want to make sure we offer the service to all kids and all families, because we have lots of families who don't fill out the paperwork. We have lots of families who are, who will be going through this process right now, um, where they're losing, you know, or being laid off for a while. And so we've got to be thoughtful of that. Those kids and those families aren't, um, you know, in that system right now. So identifying through counselors and principals and teachers, like targeted families, that is probably the easiest, best way for us to make sure that we're contacting them, uh, and offering the service. Other than that, we're going to still blanket it for everyone. And, and what we do is we set up a designated email account just for this purpose. So we can have some general idea of how many, um, breakfast lunches we can, we need to make.
Thank you.
We set up, Jim, to take donations for this? I know.
Yes, we do. So we've, I, and again, I'll publicly say, I, I am so proud of our union and our AEA. Uh, when we went through, um, the conversation about, my biggest concern really in the, in the last three days was about getting our, our families and kids fed. And the second piece was making sure that, that everyone had some sort of technology if they needed it, uh, to participate. And they stepped up and made a thousand dollar donation, the first ones. It was amazing. It was, um, and it, so we're, it, it'll run through, and we don't have any gifts and donations on here today. But it'll run through our gifts and donations specifically to, uh, the nutrition services. And we'll accept that as a donation, and what it'll do is help offset the costs of the things that we're purchasing and, and putting out there now. At other families who have asked the same question. So, uh, I will send in my next email, an opportunity where the families can donate specifically for certain things. And, um, we had a family call and say, hey, we want to donate just for this purpose, not to pay off student debt at this point in time, but to pay off, um, help pay and fund, uh, the resources you need to provide the grab and go meals. Aaron, yeah?
Jim, um, are, has Lisa sort of curtailed the, um, delivery schedule of food to also then help offset the cost? Like, is she reducing the amount of food being delivered? Because obviously we're not.
Yeah.
The building's open?
Yeah, yes, she has. Um, so in the food that we had left over as well, she donated to the Food Bantry at the end of last week. Um, you know, if you sit with Lisa, she'll be, she'll tell you, I'm really upset that we have to do it this way. I'm like, I know Lisa. She's like, we do, we do scratch meals. That's what we do. Um, and some of these are processed. I don't like it. I said, I, I get it, but it's going to last for two days for families. Um, and, uh, some, some districts are on a Monday giving five days worth of meals. And, and she want, this is what she and I came to. She thought this was great. Her staff is awesome. And we're just using the high school kitchen because it's the biggest and, um, actually makes a good flow. I haven't talked to her because I came home before it finished. I want to see how the flow worked today and we'll adjust it if necessary.
So can I ask a question? Jim? How, so this is indefinite? How long we're doing the meals? And she's doing every two days?
Yeah, until.
Or two days.
Until we know Kathy how long we're closed for. We have, we've scheduled it out through April sixth, so every Monday, Monday through April.
And as far as like who's working this, is it Lisa's whole staff or is it, you know?
No, no.
Volunteer to come in?
Yeah, she's rotating some of her staff through. So it's a, it's a, you know, they, they have, um, been in contact with the, the managers of the nutrition for all the buildings, and they're just rotating some staff through. But.
Any other questions on this, anybody? All right, next up.
Can I just add one thing?
Please.
Um, I know he hates public accolades, but the work that Jim's done to organize all this, um, really means, I just wanted to recognize, he had great people working with him. The principals, food services, custodians, um, uh, everyone else, but he organized, and this is all he's been doing, all, all of us have been doing for the past, um, couple of weeks. But I don't think people fully understand the scope of what's going on and the pressure and the stress that he's under. Um, so I just want to, you know, thank you, Jim, for everything. He's gone out and thanked people for their work, but thank you, Jim, for doing this. Um, I've been able to see it from behind the scenes and, uh, it's been a massive lift for you.
Thank you, Jim. And everybody, all, everybody is working, I know, extra hard, all the teachers and staff and on, uh, Michael and all of his people. And I think really proud to be from Ashland right now. Everybody's really stepping up. And community members too, offering to do things for people who can't do it for themselves. So, um, this always has been a community that helps one another and, uh, we're lucky to have all of you. And I'm sure that includes you too, Paul. I've seen your, uh, uplifting posts on, on Twitter, trying to keep the kids engaged, so, uh, kudos to everybody.
But Lori, before you move to the next piece, I, I do want to go on record as to stating that, you know, I, I think we need to prepare for a much longer, um, time of closure. I, I think that's something that is a realistic possibility. Um, and I, I think, you know, as we navigate through this really uncharted water, that it would be who of us as a, as a community and as a committee and administration to, to continue to think about what's next. I don't have a crystal ball when the commissioner and the governor will say, hey, by the way, we're going to push it back till after April break. My gut just tells me that's what's going to happen. Depending upon the, the impact that social distancing, you know, has. Uh, I don't want to continue using the language that they have and flattening the curve and, uh, it, what I'm concerned about is that people aren't taking that piece seriously enough. When I drive home, uh, and I drive by Fields and I've got thirty kids out there playing sports together, um, and, you know, finding ways to connect, um, physically. Uh, that's not helping the, the process. And we just need to, as families, um, you know, talk about that with our kids and to make sure that, that they understand, um, that even if you're, you don't show symptoms, you could very likely be a carrier. And you could be transmitting, uh, the virus, uh, to other people who may have, um, people at home that are more at risk than others. Particularly important, and I just, um, been doing a lot of thinking about this and, um, all the superintendents that I talk to, and then we talk every single day. There's twenty of us on a Zoom session every day, um, saying, what's the major thing that we're asking our kids and families to do? And it's to recognize the fact that, that this is an important piece of it and do everything you can to, to limit exposure. And that will help, you know, certainly slow down the tide, so.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. I, I would agree just from everything I'm seeing and hearing and reading, I'm sure the rest of you, that, you know, it, the odds are really that it's going to go on. I can't see in two weeks us being like on the other side of this and getting ready to get back to normal.
Right.
And, um, what does happen moving forward is hugely dependent on everybody doing their part. And it's not just, you know, our opinion, uh, but it's the, pretty much the opinion of any medical professional. And I think there was a letter going around today, fifty doctors from the Boston area, all the big hospitals, saying like even one on one play dates and all the things. No. So, you know, please, everybody, do your part, keeping the whole community safe and we can get back to business hopefully even sooner. Um, next up, we have.
Hey Lori, before we get off that topic, um, Jim, uh, the group that you have your Zoom with, that's like TVL mostly?
No, it's actually all of Metro West.
Okay. Um, if you're all hedging bets and thinking it's going to be after April break, uh, hasn't been any discussion of they're not being schooled the rest of the year?
Uh, again, those are decisions above my pay grade. So.
But as far as the same bet?
Yeah, no, but to be honest, Erin, I, I think the commissioner is looking at every scenario, and I think they're, they're taking it, they'll take it at two week chunks at a time, right? I think they need to see any of the data that exists. To get through April break gives us another three weeks. Um, and so that becomes a six week, um, you know, preparation. And the CDC has basically said eight to twenty weeks is really the sweet spot, right? We don't, we don't know if it's twenty, we don't know if it's, but two months of that social distancing and, and not having the schools, that may have an impact. There's no data, this is new, right? There's no data that specifically says this will happen because of it. And, you know, the, I had a, had a parent email me today asking, the first thing he says, well, I know you're, I know you're busy, uh, and I know you're handling all these situations, but what are you going to do if they cancel school? And have you figured out how you're going to? Like, no, I haven't figured that out yet. And we started asking those questions. Absolutely. Uh, we've talked about that as an admin team. Uh, we talked about it as a superintendent's association. What does it look like if we canceled school today? What does it look like? Do we, you know, what happens to the seniors? Okay, so let's assume we can change some state law and they can just graduate and move on. But do we retain kids? You know, who are only three quarters of the way through the school year? We know there's going to be a gap, right, of learning? And what happens now with that kindergarten group that is supposed to be entering into the system? So there are lots of pieces of this that I don't have any interest for, and I know people ask questions and the answer is going to be, I don't know.
What are we legally bound to as far as, um, end of school, either contractually with the union or with the state of like, I mean, is there a possibility of going into the summer with?
Not the way the current master laws, uh, we are to be done school by June thirtieth. That's master of the law. That being said, the commissioner has made it clear that, um, no school district needs to go beyond their one hundred eighty fifth day. Ours is June twenty fourth. That's when our last day of school is scheduled to be. Okay, so.
That was only based on the snow days though, right?
Nope, that, yeah, correct. He waived the rest of the days. All those other days have been waived. You don't make those up. So, but he.
June twenty fourth for us, Erin, based on where our snow days would have taken us, but for the whole state, right now, they're saying nobody can go past June thirtieth.
Right, that's.
Whatever happens after that, as far as whether things are unfinished and whether kids get some money or whatever, I think those are just ever changing things. And what could be true in the morning, it seems like is no longer true in the afternoon. I mean, I, even just a couple of weeks ago, right, Jim, we were having a conversation, I was telling them, oh, my girls, you know, that, that the kid, all three of my kids who are in college got sent home. Um, and we were like, yeah, well, that won't happen here because those are dorms and there's different circumstances. And then, you know, by the end of the day or the next day, school's canceled. I will tell you now, my kids, they've had their graduations canceled. I've had two kids graduating in May and that's canceled.
Are they still graduating with degrees, Lori, or are they just ceremony?
But they're, like, I, I think to Jim's point, I'm really not sharing all this just to, you know, just to tell a story, but I think it's causing a lot of anxiety for a lot of people. You know, kids and parents alike, I'm sure, you know, my daughter who's in college, who's supposed to be finishing student teaching. What if I don't do all my hours I'm supposed to do? Am I still graduating? Am I still ready to work someplace in the fall? Like, it's causing a lot of, and I'm sure it's true for our seniors as well, are they going to be prepared for their tests and for college? And I think all we can do right now is try to be as prepared as we can for whatever could happen, but. Handle the anxieties that are going on for a lot of people, parents and students alike, and then you, then you pile on the financial and everything else. And not to mention that there are some people that probably won't maintain their, their good health through, so we'll get to another phase when this stuff doesn't even matter when your, you know, mother's in the hospital. So, um, you know.
Lori, to your point on the mental health piece, Jim, thank you for also having the, um, the guidance staff reach out.
Yeah, Jen Cutler's phenomenal. We'll give her all the credit.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. So we do have some employees that are, that are. So we do have some employees that are, that are hourly and we need to talk about how we're gonna manage that. I know you have some thoughts about that, Jim.
Yeah, just when Barbara leaves the screen. No, I'm joking. Shit. Um, so, yeah, there's you. You're back. Say that again, Barbara?
The custodian wanted to come in and get my.
So a couple of things. One, I think it's important to understand that, um, we have, we have budgeted for a number of these positions, um, in our operating budget, uh, that are hourly, whether some of our, um, our paraprofessionals, our ESPs, our custodial staff, um, you know, nutrition, uh, secretarial and, and EDP is obviously funded outside as well as secretarial, or excuse me, nutritional, come out of, um, their revolving accounts. And we'll get into that in a minute, uh, with regard to revenues and lack of revenue coming in because of the closure as well, uh, and how we approach things. Um, I, I think what's important is that we continue to support our employees, uh, and that we continue to, and these are our most vulnerable employees, those hourly employees. Um, and so what I'm recommending, um, is at this point in time, and I, we have to revisit some of this stuff because of, um, our, our fee structure and certain things, um, like EDP, preschool and nutrition, uh, which help fund everything, is that my first ask is that the, the school committee, uh, prove that we pay all of their salaries sans overtime. So no overtime, you know, for custodial staff, right? It's just they're hourly for their normal hourly, um, rate through what they would be putting in for time. Um, for the amount of closure time that has been, uh, determined at the state level at this point in time. So, so for those three weeks that we are paying full benefit of salary for those employees, I do think we have to have a further conversation, should that closure go even longer, uh, especially for, and Barbara and I had this conversation. Um, and I'm glad Melissa's on with us today too. Um, because that revenue stream dries up and it's not out of the operating budget, we've gotta be thoughtful. Um, I, uh, I, I will tell you, it's about a half a million dollars. Um, is that right, Barbara?
Till year end.
Till, till the year end, um, uh, for, um, employees, uh, and part of that is significantly, um, revenue created from fees that would have to be, that would offset that.
Mark, just asked to clarify that, that point, that half a million for non-contract people or that's not all staff from now until the end of the school year?
No.
Could you clarify what group of people you're talking about there, Jim?
Barbara, you have that in front of you, right?
Yeah. Um, so it's EDP, pre-K and nutritional services. Now, for the three weeks that we're currently shut down, it's just about eighty-one thousand.
Thank you, Barbara. And we've, and, and Barbara and I looked at it and we feel comfortable, those definitely those three weeks within the revolving accounts that do offset some of those for preschool, EDP and nutrition. Um, I, I'm just concerned about that long period of time if we were to shut down. Uh, custodians, uh, a number of ESPs, uh, and secretarials are, are built into currently our operating budget as is. They're not fee dependent.
So Jim, are you proposing that we make a decision right now just up until the point where we know where we're closed down? And then maybe we revisit it at that point to see where we are with fees and revolving.
Absolutely. So we can further analyze it. I think we, we've gotta be thoughtful in terms of, of potential savings as well, right? I mean, so I've got Barbara looking at everything under the sun. Uh, how much are we saving over the next three weeks in substitute pay? How much are we saving, uh, in, uh, other, you know, costs that may exist in our, in our school buildings? Um, overtime pay, uh, things of that nature, bus speed, bus pay for our paraprofessionals that are no longer doing bus duty. All of those additional things, we want to be able to, to, you know, aggregate that, those numbers and see where we are. Um, you know, we're, we're in conversations with our bus company and that's a, that's a struggle, um, that we're having, uh, every district is having. Uh, we have a contract, uh, and, but we also know we don't pay the bus employees. Um, that's, they're not our employees, but I feel strongly that I want those people to be taken care of as well. And whose responsibility is that? It's the bus companies. Um, but if we're, you know, not obligated to pay, how does that impact them? There's so many little layers here that, that we're trying to work through. Um, but yeah, so what I'm asking is that, that you approve us paying, uh, these hourly employees, including it's not on there while we're on, but, um, the EDP staff as well through, uh, the, the three-week closure through April sixth, that Monday.
This is limited, this is limited just to the employees, right? This is separate from the bus contract or any of that stuff. You're talking about our employees.
That's, that's correct. Yeah, I, I just, I went on a little soapbox there. Sorry. Not happy about, not happy about the bus company.
Does anybody have anything they want to comment on about that?
Yeah, so, so Jim, uh, as it relates to that, I mean, I don't know that we need to revisit, uh, the ones that were already in our operating budget, right? Uh, but to revisit the ones that are fee-based and how we address that, what our, you know, what our capacity would address them after April sixth. Uh, you know, maybe we find savings, you know, hey, if we're not paying all, you know, maybe there's some, something worked out with the bus company, we're not paying, they're able to do something with their employees, we help them, but we save a lot of money. I, I don't know what the right thing is, but those are things that are fluid where our op, our standard operating stuff is already budgeted for those revenues. We, we know where they're coming from. Um, I, I, I'd rather give them certainty that, hey, we, we, we can be certain about that and not have them go, okay, I'm good for three weeks, but then what the heck happens, right? Uh, we can give people some sanity. I, I'd like to do that.
Yeah. No, fair enough. And that, and that was, you know, I want to be clear, I mean, that's my intention anyway, but I just, I was trying to lump it all together and how, you know, they can be two separate motions, if you will. Um, so.
Mark?
So I, I, I appreciate the point that you're making, Paul. Um, I'm, and I certainly feel like we've gotta do the right thing by our people. I, I'm gonna be more comfortable taking it in increments of time, consistent with whatever is mandated by the state level, at state level for now. Um, so I think that's up to April sixth or seventh, rather than just sort of making the commitment for the year. Um, and that's not, I mean, I think there, there are collective bargaining aspects to this. And we have contracts that say, for example, for our ESPs, they work a hundred and eighty-something, uh, days a year. I think we're obligated to probably do that. But, you know, if, if we get to a scenario where this looks different, and I think some of it's impacted by how the town wants to approach things, because, you know, quite frankly, we also have to look at to the future. And if the state is paying out a lot of money, um, to try to keep everything afloat, um, I don't know what next year looks like. And at some point in time, there may, make, be a very difficult decision we all have to make about not spending resources we do have this year, um, to avoid long-term layoffs next year. Um, and I don't, that's a much more complicated conversation than I'm prepared to get into right now. But I think for those reasons, I'm more comfortable, um, taking this sort of in three-week increments or whatever it turns out to be.
Anybody else have any?
I agree with Mark's approach.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, I, I, I respect that, but I, I totally disagree that this is something we already budgeted for. We're paying Jim for the year. We're paying our teachers for the year. These are things that are already in our budget and to think that we would even consider not fulfilling that, to me, is, i- i- is, is the things that are fee-based is, is different, right? You know, that would be, we, we have to figure out how we would do that. This is something that's, the revenues are already known, they're, they're gonna be there, but.
I'm not sure we can guarantee the revenues anymore, to be honest. If they're based on property value?
Erin, we're not gonna get into how taxes work. The, the revenues are gonna come in that way, so.
Well, I guess what I'll say is that I, I think, I, you know, knowing all of you and, and I, I'll speak for myself, but we wanna pay everybody for as long as we can, um, and we're not looking for people to, um, have anxiety over this or, uh, lose their jobs and lose their livelihoods. And, but the only thing that I will say is that, you know, none of us have ever seen anything like this and information is changing so rapidly that making any decision about anything for, you know, a length of time, that's, that's just too great. I feel like, you know, these three weeks is, um, you know, the first step and we can revisit it. And I don't think there's, at least us, from my point of view, there's no reason why I would ever like vote against it three weeks from now, unless something really changes, you know, which is likely because of what's going on and how fast things are changing. Or if there's something else in our budget that becomes an issue, I, I, I don't see why we have to make a longer-term decision just because we're in a very odd circumstance where three weeks from now, the information that we have in front of us could look absolutely nothing like what we're talking about today. So for that reason, but I, but I'll certainly share my heart and my intention is to really keep everybody afloat to what they're expecting for as long as we possibly can. And.
And I, I, I support that thought, thought process a hundred percent, Lori. I don't want anybody listening to think that I don't. It's just like, I'm very wary of what we don't know.
Yeah. And that's my sentiment too. I mean, you think about the sources of income for the town. We've got a meals tax, we have local and state taxes. If the economy and spending is grinding to a halt, real estate transactions are happening. That is going to impact our revenue. And just to Lori's point, let's think of these in the three-week chunks because we have no idea what it's gonna look like in three weeks and then address it then. But again, like others, like it would, the desire from the heart is to do that. But, you know, we're probably gonna need to be talking to Michael and FinCom in the next month or so to see what their projections are for changing, uh, state aid or even, um, internal, like the revenue in the town.
Right. Or there might even be some federal or state aid that comes in that eases everybody's burden in a way that, you know, might impact a decision that we would make. I, I, who knows?
This is always how it goes. I'm doomsday and Lori is, uh, positive and light.
Well, you know, we have to really be smart about it too and prepare for whatever, because that's just what's been happening. You know, right? When you think you've got to handle on what's happening, some new piece of news comes in and I'm all about being prepared for it and knowing what's coming down the road. But if there are decisions that we can make in shorter increments with, and with doing our best to try to reassure everybody, if anybody was watching this, uh, is that, you know, our intent is the same as anybody's, which is to try to keep everybody afloat now to the best of our ability for as long as we possibly can. And, but I just think the information that we have to make that decision today might be different than even forty-eight hours from now. But if we can make it, at least getting us to the school, uh, closing that we have right now and come back and revisit it when we have new information. And we might have the same result, but I, I, I personally would rather just do it in increments, I think, at this point.
Yeah. Yep, I'm in agreement with that.
So was there a draft motion or proposed motion, Lori?
I'm sorry, Mark?
Was there a draft or proposed motion to go along with Jim's recommendation?
I don't know. I think not. I think we just got the, a top page of the agenda.
Jim's muted.
Jim's muted. Can you unmute Jim?
See if I can unmute you.
I think what happens is we try to mute ourselves and then we can't unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Can hear you now.
Thanks. Um, so, yeah, I, I purposely did not put an actual written motion on, uh, only because I, I didn't know where the conversation would go, uh, in terms of how you wanted to approach it.
So I'll, I'll take a shot. I move to, um, continue the compensation of non-salaried staff through, is it April sixth or seventh, Jim?
The sixth, we're supposedly opening the seventh, but.
Okay. So through and including April sixth of two thousand twenty.
Second.
Okay, and we're gonna take a roll call to see if everybody agrees. So I'll start with you, Erin. You seconded, but.
I.
Okay. Kathy?
I.
Mark?
I.
Paul?
I.
Me? I. Okay. It's done.
Um, before we go to the next topic, I just got a, a good email, a nice email, um, that I want to share. Last week, obviously, when we closed down the middle school, um, for concern with regard to, um, our students, uh, they did go through the process of testing and, uh, came back negative. So, um.
That's great.
Good. That is good news.
Yeah, although we took extra precautions and, um, I, it was good to get that, that message, um, from Audrey LaCroy as of when to go, so.
Great.
Are you gonna be sharing that with the community?
I will. I will, uh, when I send an email tonight, just to, I know a lot of staff, then we'll feel more comfortable knowing that, uh.
Jim, have you talked to Michael?
Yes, I, every.
Last night? Since last night? Okay.
I, we got off the phone right before this call.
You're welcome, Melissa.
Thank you for all you do and we.
Remember, all chats are still public record as well, so.
Okay.
So Melissa went online and said, thank you.
Yeah. That's all right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, field trips and refunds.
Yeah, this is, um, this is a really challenging situation for Barbara, um, and it will be for, again, many districts across the Commonwealth. Uh, the Washington DC trip, um, Nature's Classroom, uh, and a variety of other field trips where we've already, um, sent a lot of money into, uh, for these trips in advance, uh, and that will be canceled. Uh, there will be no out-of-state travel at this point in time and that includes, you know, the DC trip. We've gotta prepare the, the, the extended travel, um, ban, uh, we'll go through that May, May timeline. Uh, so we're in the process of looking at how, you know, I think Barbara, you said we've already committed twenty thousand dollars.
Washington DC, twenty thousand dollars. And Dave did send out, um, the connect call to eighth grade.
Yeah, so, so, so we, we're trying to figure out the best possible way to, um, lose the least amount of money, if you will. Uh, there's no other way to put it, uh, with regard to, um, trips such as this, um, where you can buy insurance, but insurance allows for certain cancellations and you never, as you all know, uh, in any trip, insurance, you don't ever get a hundred percent of what you paid for. Um, and so we're, we're working with and through, um, you know, the, the company and our insurance company and, uh, Barbara and Dave will be trying to figure out what's the, the most or the least impact it'll have on our families. And similar to Nature's Classroom, Barbara and Mike will be working that out. All other, you know, the PTO sponsors a lot of our field trips, uh, and they've been, uh, they reached out to me, uh, and said they wanted to donate the money that they were, would have been supplying for enrichment opportunities and field trips to the nutrition services, uh, to help offset the cost, which I thought was great. Barbara, do you wanna, when you know, on the field trips and the refund piece, any more than that?
Um, no, I think you pretty much covered it. It's, um, complicated work.
Really?
And we do want parents to know that they said it in this, it's unknown at this point how much or when, uh, refunds would be coming.
A- a- Jim, I, I, I know this is kind of early on and stuff, but, you know, I would expect most of these vendors and other people, other companies to be trying their darndest to do the right thing and, and not leaving people high and dry. Um, I, I, I mean, I, I know it's like said, it's early on and you probably don't have a true sense, but we're, we're not getting probably even having started conversations. We're not getting a lot of, you know, uh, pushback on, 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 on those kind of things. I, I would hope not, at least at this point.
So, yeah, I, I, I'm not one to words my emotions well, huh? My, um, the.
Really?
Yeah, right. I, I would fall, uh, I would say that we will. Yeah, right. I, I would fall, uh, I would say that we will have a fight on our hands, uh, with many of these companies. The Super Tenants Association, um, sought legal counsel, uh, where we wrote, um, a letter. To the international touring companies like EF Tours, who we use, and there are a variety of others across, uh, the country that we utilize. Demanding that our families get vouchers and, uh, we're starting at that level. Starting a legal process against those firms. So, uh, I don't know if that will happen at this level.
What I can add to that is on a national level, uh, EF Tours in particular is being targeted, their, their contracts. And I've had to look at a few, say things like, um, you get a voucher for another trip, but there are a lot of families who saying, you know, my kid's a senior, I'm never gonna go. Um, it's useless to me. And there's now a class action lawsuit that's been filed in California against EF Tours. Trying to get them to do something more than just give these vouchers.
He would do the attorneys there, good. The superintendent, we, we pushed it off to the attorneys.
And, and, and I totally get that it's kind of a trickle effect, right? If, if a tour company and had laid, outlaid money to some provider. That, you know. That, that is probably a, a, a trickle-down effect and, you know, it's probably, they, they might do, do better. Once they get something from vendors that they deal with, right? But, uh, I'm hoping that, that it resolves. You know, so no one's outlaying too much.
Well, and that's exactly, I mean, Barbara, to that, to Barbara's point, I mean, Capital Tours is the company, but they, they've contracted with the bus company who's. You know, they've already paid some money out, too. Uh, so it is complicated. It's not just as simple as saying, we gave them twenty thousand dollars and they should just return it. But that's where we are with field trips and refunds. That's why I just wanted to give you an update that we are pursuing all avenues to, to recoup as much. Funding as we can from the organizations that we've already outlaid money to and parents have outlaid.
Nature's Classroom, we hadn't done anything really yet, right? As far as deposits?
Uh, we did make a deposit to them, and we've also, um, signed contracts with buses, so we're working on that.
That's, I mean, that's, that's the nature of that item.
Okay, so. Athletic, EDP and other fees.
Barbara, you want to take this one?
Sure. Um, so, um, the school committee is responsible for setting all fees. Once we know, for instance, if the, what the spring season looks like. We're not asking you to do anything today, we're just kind of putting it on your plate that at some point, we're gonna need to come back to you. To ask you to reduce some of the fees, um, for the year. It could be, uh, bus fees, it could be spring sports. Pre-K and food service, I mean, they're, they're daily, so I think they're fine. It's more the, the seasonal or annual fees that will need to be adjusted.
But annual, Barbara, you're talking busing?
Yes.
Oh, I mean, that's where we are. I, 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 I think depending upon how, you know, elongated this closure is. Uh, we're gonna have to give it some significant thought. Uh, clearly. If, if we adjust fees, uh, in, say, the spring season's two months long, we're gonna have to have conversations and, and bargaining. Uh, stipends. And, you know, there's, there are lots of pieces of this puzzle that, you know, we'll have to take care of. And, you know, we're, um, pulling out, you know, where the MIA stands. They obviously push back athletics already, uh, for another couple of weeks. And, you know, at least for the, I think it was end of April.
Correct.
And so that leaves May and early part of June. And I think those conversations will move forward after the commissioner makes some decisions on what education looks like. For the rest of the year.
Barbara, how, we looked at our bus contract to see what sort of potential refund we would get from them, from the buses sitting? Or, you know, we paid in for the year, no outs.
Uh, the regular yellow buses?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we make ten payments, um, a year, and we have just made our seventh. The bus company is talking to us, um, trying to come to some agreement. And our attorney is currently looking over the contract and putting some together for us.
It goes back to Erin, what I said earlier about hopefully the companies are doing the right thing by employees as well, right? So, um, while technically they're not our bus drivers, they are our bus drivers, right? They are part of the Ashram Public Schools. We treat them as part of the Ashram Public Schools and we value them. They are the first contact most days for all of our, for the majority of our kids. Uh, and that experience that those kids have because of those drivers and because those drivers feel like they are part of the Ashram Public Schools. Is critically important. Um, so we want to make sure to a certain extent, too, that we have some. Say and leverage with our, you know, transportation company, that their employees are the right way.
On, on that point, Jim, do you have a sense that Connolly has contracts with lots of districts in the area? Um, and I've heard from some through my work that, you know, they're kind of struggling with the same thought process and what to do with it. And whether it's Connolly or some other bus company, given that they, um. You know, they, they don't really employ those individuals. But, you know, one of the things I, I guess I think about is. At least with subs, Connolly employs people and they might be driving for us one day and for another district, uh, another day. Um, and I don't know, you know, I guess, just as a parent, I know bus drivers drive the same, generally speaking, every day. But I'm just, I, I, I'm torn on this one, to be perfectly honest. I know we're not there yet, but, um. You know, it's something that I guess, I'll be curious to know what your colleagues are looking to do. You know, if they, if they're working with Connolly as well.
Yeah, Mark, it's a good point. Yeah, Barbara, go ahead, please.
Oh, um, to that point, um, business managers are having a conference call tomorrow at noon with Jay Sullivan from DESI. And transportation is one of those topics, out of district tuitions is another.
Yeah, so, so Mark, to Barbara's point, I think hopefully there's, there's clarity coming, uh, in the next, um, couple of weeks. With regard to transportation costs, but also out-of-district payments, uh, out-of-district transportation. Are, um, are students who are in the public, um, collaboratives versus residential, private colla-. You know, like, there, there are so many questions I have about what are our legal obligations, uh, with regard to paying those tuitions. If students are no longer attending those schools. Uh, and we know we have a thirty-day period where we have to, but it's sort of. Those are questions that we're trying to, these are all new, it's all new to us, right?
The residential schools that are meant for our special ed, or some more severe special ed kids, have those closed? And are the kids back home with their loved ones?
No, 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 they're, they haven't closed. But we have students who, you know, who are non-residential, who are at home, for sure.
Are we chat, or do we have a method of checking in on those parents?
Yeah. Kathy actually, uh, has done that, and we actually, um, although the, the school. I, I remember today she sent me an email saying, hey, by the way, I, I provided some resources for this family. Even, and even though the school that that child attends should be the ones providing the resources. Uh, we're doing the right thing by our kids. Those are our kids. We still view it that way. Kathy's all over that, absolutely.
Awesome.
Did that cover that, Barbara?
Vision to be made right now, just.
No, nothing right now, just.
Keep it on the radar.
Everything is about radar for you all.
There are a lot of things on the radar right now, and it's just.
A lot of these meetings.
Many moving parts and, um, a lot of lives impacted. And whatever decision we make, you know, so. Um, but at least that one is on hold momentarily. And I, I don't know, anything else, Jim? I thought was the last item.
Second, turn minute two.
So, can I ask just one particular question?
Sure.
Um, given how quickly things are changing, do we need to be scheduling these kind of calls?